To the elementary teachers, especially the pre-K teachers, wow.
One word, wow.
Yeah.
I got to see you on video, come on.
Oh, you did? Oh, boy.
We're in a celebration.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I was, so two of the classrooms, I think, saw like a video I had made and then for two of them, I, I was there in person.
Yes, yes. I was there for virtual you.
Sorry.
Um, so I would like to begin this evening's Southborough School Committee meeting. Um, as of six thirty P M, I will call this meeting to order. Um, the first thing that we're gonna do on the agenda is open it up for any public comments, if there's any public comments this evening. Okay, seeing as there's none, we'll start with, um, new business and we have our principals' reports that.
So I'm just gonna, I think we have our, our retiree recognition too.
Oh, excellent, that's right, I have that on my list on it.
So I mean, yeah.
So we're gonna recognize our retirees, let's start that part off early, the early part of our, um, school committee meeting tonight.
So I have the pleasure of welcoming Heather DeBois up to, um, join me.
Thank you.
So Heather has been a member of the Southborough community for thirteen years, working with our elementary students, teaching them all about art. I believe, um, Dr. Gabron hired you?
Yes.
And Principal Randall was a principal and you worked with Principal Ryan and, and Principal Mucci and they all spoke, speak very highly of you. Um, I think that your commitment to art and the way you approach students, the way you are a part of the school community, has been very impressive and we're grate- grateful for your years of service and we want to wish you well in your retirement. And as a small, um, gesture of our appreciation, we have a small gift for you.
Thank you.
So here's the gift.
Good one.
And, um, speaking of gifts, Clayton and Steve are not here this evening because they did not wanna give a gift of them not feeling well to you. So, but they did give me something to read, so they wanted to, uh.
That was a gift, I will thank, be sure to thank them.
Let you know they wanted to be here, but were a bit under the weather.
Okay.
So as the art teacher between Finn and Woodward, Heather was responsible for teaching students how to paint, draw, and perform other basic art techniques. She also planned craft projects, group projects, and other hands-on activities for students. What wasn't mentioned in her job description was instilling a passion for art and having students look at the world as true artists do. In addition, Heather taught students how to appreciate their own unique perspective on the world and encourage students to take risks. When students completed their work, she always made sure that the student art was displayed and celebrated throughout the school areas, our school hallways. Heather also conducted annual art shows showcasing every student's art like it was a gallery presentation. And she also reached out and established relationships with various community groups. Heather entered student artwork and exhibits at the Worcester Art Museum and showcased student work at the Southborough Senior Center and Southborough Town Hall. Most importantly, Heather will be missed as a great calling, so.
Thank you.
So we wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. I think the school committee will have to say a few words, so.
Sure. I have my mom with me, by the way.
Well done, Mom.
Um, Heather, if I could just share on behalf of the Southborough School Committee, thank you so much for your service. Um, um, Greg mentioned that in his speech of sorts and, um, we don't take it lightly. We really, um, know that, you know, the choice that we, you made to continue to serve throughout the last several years, we really appreciate that. And, um, sharing your talent and your gift with our children in that way, um, as a mother of three children, um, I appreciate that. I believe that I have some of your art projects sitting in my house. Um, and, you know, just to reflect on that too, I, um, as a, many of us in the community are of the science and technology, um, stream, but I so appreci- appreciate the art aspect as well, um, because I feel like it adds to the like whole development of the child. So I just wanna thank you for that and I hope you have the best time during your next phase, it's retirement from the school district, but I'm sure you're gonna do some wonderful things.
Thank you, thank you, very much appreciate.
And I'll be sending you a substitute application.
On January second.
Thank you, I just wanna say from the bottom of my heart, I'm blessed I feel to have worked for this community. Um, the community and the parents and the teachers, the staff, it's all been great raising children as a parent myself and an educator. It just can't be done alone and I've had great support from the community, from staff. And I'm really gonna miss the students. Um, this, this, um, third grade class that I have really is special to me because I feel like we've been places together. I met them, um, I think in my dining room on Zoom when they were five. And now here they are in third grade and it's just been wonderful watching the true growth. And it's been a gift to be able to teach them about the world we live in through art. And about science, I love and appreciate science and we know that's given us so many blessings to be, in, in the world. Um, it got us through the pandemic and we saw in the pandemic that too, that the art got us through the pandemic emotionally. And a lot of, I enjoyed seeing that, a lot of families, you know, supporting, you know, whether it was visual art, music art, theater art. It, um, it's about just as important as science in my opinion, so, and I hear you saying this, recognizing that too. So thank you so much, everybody, you're blessed.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Well, that was a great way to start our evening, um, and I will transition us back into, um, our agenda. And I will, um, so new business, our principals' report, if you, are we ready for that?
We are ready.
We are ready.
All right, so we have a, a new delegate tonight that's going to.
Yes, so Principal Ryan does apologize, he's, he's not feeling well and, um, I, I thanked him on behalf of the school committee, not coming to the meeting and sharing his, his, uh, whatever he's battling, so, um, we'll provide that update tonight. So Finn, Finn held its second annual celebrations around the world event today, put together by the Finn preschool. Jen Henry and the pre-K team created a day-long program to support Finn's work with inclusivity and culturally responsive teaching. Students were issued passports and traveled from classroom to classroom, learning about Akara Sancrente Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Diwali, Lunar New Year, Eid Al Fitr, Fitar, Fitar, Holy Lantern Festival, St. Lucian Day, Cinco de Mayo. For each of the holidays mentioned, preschool parents volunteered to provide an overview of what holiday was all about, with games, activities, videos, and crafts. Parents who did volunteer to provide a specific holiday over, uh, holiday overview came in and dre- came in dressed in their native holiday festive attire, read books, and showed videos about the holiday. Students received souvenir bags upon getting their passport stamped. This event was an excellent way to showcase the rich diversity of the Finn school community and highlight many wonderful family traditions. As a reward for exceeding their math S T goal, their S T math goals during November, students at the Finn school were treated to a visit from Gigi, the S T math penguin. The S T math school goal for November was to have thirty percent of K and one grade students complete thirty percent of their puzzles for the month. Finn students achieved thirty-eight percent of their puzzles and consistently had over ninety-five percent of students signing on to S T math weekly. At this rate of progress, Finn may meet their yearly goal of eighty percent of puzzles completed by beginning of March. So those are the two updates from Finn.
All right, and I will give updates from Woodward. On Monday, staff participated in a mindfulness activity led by Woodward parent and Southborough resident Emma Bartalini. This work was connected to the school improvement goal of healthy and balanced learners and prioritizing students and staff's social, emotional, and physical well-being. Teachers took part in chair yoga and meditation practices that can be used to relieve stress and anxiety. These same techniques and routines can be used within the classroom to help students manage stress and become more aware of their bodies and their emotions. While the first session was geared toward the staff's social, emotional well-being, she has been invited back to work with students in the classroom setting. We are grateful for Emma and her partnership in bringing more mindful and meditative practices to Woodward. While we are sad to see Ms. Dubois retire, we are excited to share some news regarding the art teacher position at Woodward and Finn. After an extensive interview process, Ms. Miranda Jiang has been named our new art teacher and member of the Southborough Educational Community. Ms. Jiang is a dedicated and accomplished art teacher with experience in Dedham, Mass. and Fort Lee, New Jersey. In addition, she has worked at the Rhode Island School of Design and has run her own summer camp and art studio, teaching art lessons to students of all ages. Ms. Jiang holds a Bachelor of Fine Arts and a Master's in Teaching from the School of Visual Arts in New York. Ms. Jiang also brings her experience and perspective as an English language learner during her schooling in Korea and California. We are excited that Miranda will join the Finn and Woodward communities.
And I will provide the Neri update. Neri kicked off their Crochet for Kindness project this month. Neri staff partnered with the Southborough Seniors Knitting Group and so far they've collected over fifty crocheted items. They will continue collecting donations until January. At that point, they will distribute them, along with a note, across Southborough from town buildings to businesses and beyond. They added a Q R code to the notes students write, so finders can take a picture and upload it to Crochet for Kindness's Google Drive. The students, staff, and seniors are very excited about this project. On November twenty-first, Neri Grade Five students participated in the annual cross-country course. This Neri tradition is the culminating event after weeks of training during the cross-country unit in P E. Grade Five students competed to win a spot on their class team and the seven classroom teams raced against each other, while the rest of the fifth graders, fourth graders, and staff cheered them on. Mr. Wallach's class was the twenty-twenty-three champion, Dylan Couture was the boys' gold medalist, and Genevieve Forestier was the girls' gold medalist. It was a fun event for all.
In my turn, on behalf of Principal Herscheck, I'll provide the Trotter update. Uh, Trotter is thrilled to announce the successful reboot of Trotter's online newspaper, Getting Real with the Rams. The initiative to revitalize this platform stemmed from Trotter's commitment to fostering creativity, critical thinking, and effective communication skills among their students. This seventh-grade elective course is comprised of enthusiastic and talented students who have been working diligently to cover a wide range of topics relevant to our school community. From student achievements and faculty spotlights to features on extracurricular activities and community events, Getting Real with the Rams aims to be a vibrant reflection of the diverse experiences within our school. The class and newspaper are credited to three E L A teachers, Mrs. Grimley, Mrs. Penzone, and Mrs. Morris. Second update is with great pride, the Trotter team shares the news that our robotics team, Sketchy Rams, has advanced to the, I need an explanation on that, has advanced to the state final competition, which will be held at W P I this Saturday. The team's exceptional dedication, hard work, and innovative problem-solving have propelled them to this significant achievement. Trotter's team demonstrated outstanding collaboration, technical expertise, and perseverance throughout the season. Their success is a testament to the commitment of the Trotter students, as well as the guidance and mentorship provided by Trotter's technology education teacher, Mrs. Laura Folsom, who oversees the robotics program. The Trotter school and staff are looking forward to supporting them as they aim for success in the upcoming competition. That's Trotter update.
Any, um, questions or feedback, Roger?
Um, Keith, I have a question about the event at W P I.
Yes.
Is that an event that's actually open to the public or is it really too, is it too closed? It is?
It's open to the public.
It is open to the public, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Her mom's the teacher.
Um, I'm curious to know how you joined the robotics team, but maybe you don't have that answer, um.
Well, I do know, I mean, from, from past practice, I think, M- Mrs. Folsom does a great job of really offering it up to as many students as possible and between their other commitments and this, it really boils down to a good committed team and I think it's a great feeder program for the, for the high school, it has had that history before. Um, and whenever competitions become available for this level, we seem to gravitate towards that and that's a good guide to really get that commitment. So I know it's open, I, I don't know what's happened the last couple of years where we've had to have one team or two, but I know there's always been a, a very healthy group of students that want to participate.
Yes, Dan.
Um, on the robotics team, I have a request, if it's possible to, for us, for them, the team to come and present
Ah.
Uh, to us, either like in person would be ideal or like a video or something that we could showcase to the community if we're here.
You, you know, that's very intimidating, right, to see what these kids can do with robots.
I think you've been here for the last one, as they did, probably.
Intimidating for you.
I still can't do, I still can't do the robotics, you know.
That's what it was.
There's a machine for them.
Mm-hmm.
So just through the chair too, we had the pleasure of visiting Trotter for a few days and we did get into the science, technology, and engineering class. And all students are engaged in, um, the robotics and the first robotics. Even though many might not be on the team, they are getting that experience in their daily curriculum at Trotter.
Thank you, Roger.
So, um, through the chair again, so, um, the demonstration I saw was a number of years ago.
Yes, it was.
So I can't imagine what's actually happened as far as how robotics have moved forward and how the students have undoubtedly moved forward with it, so.
Yeah.
But did, what, what, is the event an all-day event or is it, uh, at the W P I event, is it an all-day event?
Um, as far as I know, it's eight AM to three PM.
Okay, thank you.
So if you, if you do a, a plan on attending, my recommendation is, uh, go to the second half of the day. That's when many of the competitions are happening, um, and it gets really exciting.
Okay. Um, any other comments on the other updates? I would say you also gave an update from Trotter about the online newspaper, I think that's really awesome because I think it's gonna serve them well as they prepare for high school. You know, if these same students, um, continue on, um, now you have created this interest and, um, journalism is, is so important, especially at this, um, you know, especially in, in the day, in day and age that we're in now. I think some of the other updates that you shared, I just wanna reflect back on the Finn and the Woodward update. The around-the-world event, which I participated in today, the children were so excited about that. Um, and not so much just about what they were like, uh, a takeaway, you know, some sort of gift or trinket that they would take away, but they loved learning about, um, all these different celebrations and seeing, um, you know, seeing themselves through that. Like, oh, that sounds familiar to me, I, I didn't know that someone else does that. So I think that was just like such a great, um, um, opportunity or event that they put on, um, today. And, uh, they've done for a n- number of years. And then around the new art teacher, um, you know, I'm so glad that we were able to fill that position with, and it sounds like her, um, background is a great fit for, for us, so. Um, I know that Ms. Dubois is leaving end of December, would Ms. James start, okay, as the new year started?
Yes, she'll be starting on January second.
Okay, okay. Um, the reason I asked that, I was wondering if there was any overlap, if she came in, you know, already started and then there was overlap.
I don't, I think, um, Ms. James' current position, which is a long-term sub, ends at the end of next week. So there's not o- an opportunity for overlap, but I know Heather is willing to come back and
Mm-hmm.
help and support, um, her.
That's awesome. Anything else? All right, um, thank you for that update and for those of you that have just filled in. Um, so next on the agenda is a, a presentation on the multilingual learner education and some data, um, and analysis that's been captured there. Welcome, Rhoda.
Thank you, you're welcome. All right, good evening, it's a pleasure to be with you here today and to give you an update about multilingual learner program. So, um, there are plenty, there's plenty of legislation, both federal and state, that we have to implement in our district. This is just a list of some of the guidels, uh, given to us by the Department of Education. Um, linked here, the Massachusetts Blueprint for L Success has an amazing amount of research-based information for districts. And the L dashboard, data dashboard, all accessible to everybody, um, has information basically on last year's, um, population in all of our districts. My presentation today, of course, is, is based on our strategic plan empowering learners and equity of opportunity. So multilingual learner or English learner, the Department of Education is still using the word English learner. Uh, we conscientiously changed that to multilingual learner in our district to make sure that we are capturing and seeing the students as assets because they're coming to us with different home languages, which I will refer to in just a minute. Uh, the state law definition is very simple, actually too simple, and an English learner is a student whose first language is not English and who is not currently able to perform ordinary classroom, classwork in English. The federal definition is a lot longer and gives, um, more information as to the depth of what comprises an English learner. Some of the folders that I'm using are from a summer program, uh, and this is one of them, of students creating their own, um, business. Um, and then presenting about what their business project was going to be. So what we do in our district, um, and this is required, the first step is required by the Department of Education, every family in Massachusetts fills out a home language survey, regardless of the language spoken in the home. If a language, in addition to other than English is mentioned, uh, the Department of Education, uh, requires districts to screen for language proficiency, just like we do math screenings, literacy screenings. What we do in our districts is realizing that our, our, uh, families come with a lot of assets, um, especially when there are other languages and cultures spoken in the home. So we sit down and talk to the families and, and the families know their children the best and to explain to us how they've used their languages, what their values are, uh, how lan- the use of languages have changed over time and if they have more than one child, that also changes over time. So those informations, um, those, um, conversations are very important to us and we share them with classroom teachers and subject teachers as well. We, um, are required to use two different screenings, given to us by the Department of Education, which are in place in our district. And if a student qualifies, given certain criteria, uh, we let the parents know by sending them placement letters that they qualify, uh, into the multilingual learner program. Now the parents, this does not come as a surprise to the families because we have spoken to the families when we've met with them, explaining, uh, to, to them what the process is all about. So when now we look at district trends that we have, um, our population trend analysis, home languages, proficiency levels, and staffing, this is a picture of our students at the middle school. Um, and they all very much enjoy being together and have lunch, uh, many times with Mrs. Wickstead at the, at the middle school. So we've been gathering data since two thousand and four, two thousand and five school year, where really there are no regulations put in place. And in Southborough, we counted eleven students at that time called multilingual, uh, English learners, sorry. To date, in Southborough, we see that we, uh, the trend is to increase, um, like post-pandemic, we're up to ninety-three students. Uh, the calendar year, um, closes in many, uh, countries abroad and this is when we do see sometimes an influx or a few students come to us in January when their school year has, has finished, um, abroad. But right now, uh, we have qualified ninety-three multilingual learners. And the lighter bar that you see here was sixty-three, those are the students that we reclassified from the program, reclassified or graduated after meeting a certain criteria. Um, and we follow those students by DESI's guidance for four academic years. The reality is that when we reclassify the students, it's not that they're not continuing to learn English language, it's that now they're gonna be, um, not in the program, not taking the access test, but we have to make sure that they continue to grow academically for another four years. These are not the same students as those fifty-one that you see there, they were, we reclassified twenty-two students at the end of last school year, so now they're included in this number of sixty-three. This, um, data is, is, um, available on DART. Uh, the current school year is not available yet, but this is the race and ethnicity only of the students who are qualified into our program. Um, so you see the eight, we see fifty-eight point five of Asian population, Hispanic, white, and multi-race. These are self-reported categories by families. Now what is fascinating in Southborough, and it has been this way for a very long time, um, and you see that this is different, uh, the way of presenting it from last year because we're using Elevation, a student management platform that we use to house and collect all information about a multilingual learners and the students who we have reclassified. But it is a very nice visual representation to show that other multilingual learners and the students who we have reclassified, you see there's a majority of language of Chinese, followed by Portuguese and Russian, closely followed by Spanish and Arabic, and then a list of all the other languages, which, this is so important to talk about because a language is tied to culture. Um, and you see the wonderful, uh, variety of languages and cultures that we find here in Southborough. What is interested, interesting is, I'm only reporting on multilingual learners and former multilingual learners, but in Southborough, according to the Department of Education, Southborough's at twenty-five point seven of first language, not English. And then again, that, those are, uh, categories that families report when there's a home language other than English. When a family cannot, um, access English, uh, either through a spoken, uh, the spoken language or the written language, we're required to interpret or translate for those languages. And I want to commend the work done by Deb Young, who is the, um, assistant to the, um, English learner, multilingual learner program in coordinating for all attend schools. We know exactly which family member needs interpretation or translation and we are providing interpretation into any language that the family needs as well as translating important documents. It's very important that families have access to the children's education. These are the language proficiency levels of our students. Um, the foundational level are for students that come to us not speaking English to, at, or one or two, a few words, too low developing, that forms a foundational level. The guidance by the Department of Education is to provide seven point five hours per week. So we're at about thirty-two percent of our students at that foundational level. It makes sense that they require, uh, more intensive, uh, instruction of, uh, English, of the English language and that is in the, we're talking about not only social language that can be learned very quickly, but it's the academic language that is needed. And then we have about sixty-one percent, close to sixty-two percent at the transitional level. The expectations for the students are much higher in the classroom and we also provide the instruction, um, the academic language that they need in order to be successful. So the multilingual learners are not one fixed profile. We, um, these are just a few of the different, um, groups that we could talk about. Newcomer is a student who's considered within the first year of being in our schools or coming to the United States. We have students who have disabilities or learning challenges. Long-term English learners are students who are in the program for more than five to seven years. Students with limited or interrupted formal schooling. We do have to remember also the COVID years, we do ask families, you know, what's, what education looked like for their children, no matter where they were living. And the former English learners are the students that we reclassified. Of course, students could belong to two or three of these categories and so they would intersect. Now, the way that we work in our district with our students, um, is in a very Now, the way that we work in our district with our students is in a very integrated way. The Department of Education, one thing that they require from districts is that we build culturally responsive classrooms in which there are two components to it, but these are fully integrated. So sheltered content instruction, or SEI, is taught by the classroom teacher or the subject teacher. And if you remember the Retail Initiative, core academic teachers need to have the SEI endorsement in order to be trained to work with multilingual learners in the classroom. And our students are in the classroom throughout the school day. And our responsibility is to make sure that the children can access grade-level content. The second part to that is the English language development of ESL, taught by licensed ESL teachers. And the training is that we have to be providing systematic, explicit, and sustained language based on the Massachusetts frameworks and the WIDA standards. And so that's what we have in place. We have units that correlate with what's going on in the classroom, focusing on the academic English that they need in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And it'll occur according to the amount of instruction that the children need and working that together with the classroom teachers so that there is a full integration of what is happening in the students' school day. According to DESI, we are a state that implements the WIDA standards, and they're based on four very big ideas: equity of opportunity, integration, collaboration, and a functional approach to learning language. And that is research-based, of course. So what we're going to look at now is curriculum that each district is required to have. These are students in our classrooms, learning about life cycle. So just to give an example, and this is a unit in grade three, life in the soil is also, there is a correlation to what is happening in grade three. What happens in the ELD instruction time is that we're focusing on what is the language, the linguistic load that a student needs in order to understand what is happening in the classroom. The pace of the classrooms are very fast, and in order to have the language in the four domains, the receptive language is achieved earlier than the expressive language, which is the speaking and the writing. So we're developing that unit-based, it's not a list of vocabulary. Everything is integrated and meaningful in a multi-sensory way. And they would be learning also, for example, the language of sequencing. And so a student, no matter what level of language proficiency, even a newcomer, can access what is going on in the classroom. And all our units are also integrated with a castle or cell, social-emotional learning, since that is such a big component to any student's learning, especially our multilingual learners. As a district, we're held accountable for how our students do. Of course, our families and our children, they receive reports, also the English language development progress reports, and that's how the students are doing in learning the English language. But the students also have to take a yearly access test, which the window is opening when we come back from vacation on January 6th. So that's, and it closes on January 10th, 16th, actually. They just gave us another full week to be able to assess the students. So that's a yearly test, it's high stakes for our students, because we cannot reclassify students until they reach a certain score. And our students, as from grade three, are also taking MCAS. So there, they're the correct dates. So we receive reports back from the state, how we're doing as a district overall, how every school is doing, and individual student reports. We analyze that at the school level, district level, and for the parents, we're sending back the individual report that looks like this, but it's one page, not split in half, and it also goes home translated for families who need translation. So this gives you an idea of a student who is functioning at that low foundational level, almost at a level three. Overall score here is a 2.8. And the nice thing is that there are bullets to explain to the families what those levels mean. So once we get those access reports, which we'll get them at the end of May, we look at our reclassification criteria. This is a criteria given by the state, an overall score of 4.2, literacy of 3.9. We look at other relevant data to make the final decision. We take a look at MCAS, but MCAS is not a determining factor. And if the students can be reclassified or graduated from the program, letters are mailed home. And then we're monitoring the students for four academic years. And the ELD teachers are involved in this academic monitoring. So just a few highlights, the family and school partnership that we have. We get to know our families very well. Families are also coming, many of our families, it's the first time that their children are coming to an American school. The schooling looks different, so we become, you know, it's a source of how does the school work in our district. Also getting to know the families like I talked about, and they're fully integrated into our schools. Professional development, we were able, through grants, to bring in new curriculum resources. And we continue to develop our units. I reported in August about a multilingual learner program, which is bringing together our two communities and how friendships are established. And we are always looking at what is something that's going to enrich our students' lives and also expose them to college life here by taking them on college visits. Elevation is a student platform that I talked about, and I integrated a couple of the graphs today. We have begun student success plans, because for students that don't make enough progress on the access test, this is a plan to ensure that everybody that works with a student is focused on where the student needs to make growth on the next access test. We provide language access to all our family members that need it. We have become, we have started, began, I meant to say. The LPAC, or Multilingual Learner Advisory Council. We have chairs, Gella Ebert is the chair. We have a co-chair, Marie Sajou, and Secretary of Genius, Opolova. And those meetings are a true gift. Families come with their children, there is dinner, and there's a time where we're talking about different topics of interest to the families and interpreters that they are present at those meetings. Also, we took about 10 members to a Better Together Summit. That was a Department of Education for families with over 700 participants statewide. We are incredibly proud of the collaboration that happens across all, from administration to everybody in the building, custodians, cafeteria workers, nurses, everybody's working together for the sake of our students. And then there are different events that happen inside the schools, but district-wide, getting to know each other better and exposed to different events, like the Cultural Music Festival International Night, with the purpose of, the more we get to know each other, the more that we will understand and build a much stronger community. So thank you for having me here today. Here's a photo of all our grade one through five, because the high school and middle school were in a different part of the college. And here is a photo of all our students, Northborough and Southborough, after doing a tour of Anna Maria College and asking questions like, you know, the purpose is, is probably they're going to be the first generation to go to college here so that they are able to understand and see themselves in a college campus. So thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda.
You're welcome.
Really very informative, thank you. Roger has a question.
I really do appreciate the enthusiasm you bring to this presentation. So I have the acronym WIDA standard?
Yes.
Figured I'd test you.
Yes, no, yes, you're testing here, I do have it. Yes, thank you. WIDA's World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. It's somehow, yes, I have it.
No shortage of acronyms.
No shortage.
I have a question about a former.
Yes.
calculation of a former student in the program. So I understand that when a student graduates or transitions, that they're tracked for four years.
Yes.
And I think I remember that in a much recent year, I think we had 63.
Yes.
So there was a, so there was a category.
Would you like me to go to that section?
Well, you're going to end up bouncing around.
No, it's very easy.
Well, there's a category that had long-term learners, the phrase "long-term learners."
Right.
Does that, what does that mean related to a, to the calculation of former?
So here, the 63 are students that we have reclassified from the program.
Correct.
The other term, long-term, are the students that, for various reasons, take longer to be reclassified from the program.
You have sort of a guide, if you will, that you use, and if the students generally should, you know, graduating in a certain amount of time?
Yes, but the interesting thing is, like in education, every child is unique, right? With their own set of factors. And if you are in any bilingual program or you're learning another language, any part of the world, it's a 12-year process, right? So they're just giving us a certain saying, you know, they should be exited by this amount of time. But in reality, research says it really depends. So it's just a term that is used. We're fully aware of who those students are, and we know the reasons why. And one thing is that it's only based on one test, so.
Okay, and I just have a last question on this.
Yes.
So if a student comes into the program.
Yeah.
And graduates, and then is tracked for four years, is that student counted anymore once, in other words, that student then drops out of the former?
Yes.
So they may still be in the school system, but they're not really tracked in either of these?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do students ever fall back into, go from like former to back into the program?
We, in all the years, we've only brought two back into the program.
So you track it well enough to know whether or not they need additional support? Thank you.
One more question, yeah, another question.
Thank you, Rhoda, for that.
You're welcome.
I have a question on the foundational level hours and the transitional level hours.
Yes.
So can you explain what those hours look like and how that translates to two slides later when you're on the sheltered immersion program? Are the hours for those two sections linked to the English as second language taught by ESL?
Yes.
And is it one-on-one? Or is, like, how does that look?
Um, so this amount of hours, you know, it would look like if a student's coming, let's say as a beginner, right? As a true beginner. So the ELD teacher might work two to three periods a day with that student.
Okay.
Right? So the way that, and that is linked to this other, it's taught by licensed teachers who are experienced developing language in children, no matter what language they come to us with. So that is the link.
And is it in the classroom, or is the child gets pulled out?
It's usually in small groups.
Okay.
And outside of the classroom, because the linguistic load of the classroom is too fast.
Yeah.
And children need a quiet setting. And the other thing is that when you're learning a language, you need a quiet setting, but also you will be, the children will talk more when they're in their ELD classroom, and then that transfers into the classroom.
Okay.
Right? And that's why the need for a quieter setting. And that's one of the things that the state requires, that the school, the teacher, the kids are taught in, that the ESL or ELD has a specific classroom in every building.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I ask another question?
Yeah, please.
As a long-term learner myself, I have a question about the teacher education program. So I was looking for some information on that, like how do you develop the teachers in this program to increase their capability?
Do you mean, so you're a lifelong? We're all lifelong learners, and of languages, for sure, because we cannot, you know, this is just, so you're a lifelong learner.
Oh, lifelong.
Yes.
Long-term.
So the training for content and ESL, content teachers and subject teachers, now teachers are graduating from teacher training programs with that course, right? And it's really from the intermediate level of students, that high level three and up that they're trained for, not for the students that are at the beginning stages, right? The ESL, there are graduate programs in the state that prepare teachers to become ESL-licensed teachers.
And can I just add something to that? Is that Rhoda works really hard with the department on, the ELD teachers are constantly engaged in going to conferences and to professional development offered by DESI. And then they also have been wonderful about providing workshops for our content teachers. And I was with the Professional Development Committee today, and one of the teachers from Rhoda's department was explaining some of the offerings that some of those teachers will be providing to other teachers to just continually refresh and increase and, you know, improve our capacity in this area.
I'll also add that all of our educators are endorsed. So they've gone through a series of training. So all of our classroom teachers, all of our content teachers, that is a requirement. So there's a foundational level that every educator has. Isn't the same level as our ESL ELD educators, but it is a foundational level.
So.
A quick question and then a follow-up. Is this your last presentation to the school committee?
We might, I might invite her for a few more.
If so, I just wanted to say. I did just want to say that it's been a pleasure having you present. I think I always look forward to these particular presentations. You do a really nice job making it clear for us and just, I think, like Roger said, the enthusiasm over what we do here is great. So thank you. Hopefully, we get to hear from you again.
Thank you. No, it's a pleasure. And I want to, you know, express my gratitude. It's an amazing group of teams, the ELD teachers, and how they are leaders, and really have the passion also, and so integrated, you know, this is an amazing community to be working in. So passion is something very easy to have when things are really, there's so much dedication. Thank you.
Can I just say?
Okay.
I'll say the last word.
Okay.
So Rhoda is retiring at the end of this school year, so we have the pleasure of working with her until June 30th. So we have some more time for more presentations, just let me know. So Rhoda has done a wonderful job. I think she is, you know, it's always, you know, what of our work will endure when we leave our positions? And Rhoda is leaving a department that is high-performing, high-functioning, extremely professional-capable, that will continue the work in her absence. We, as I shared with the committee, we successfully hired a candidate for Rhoda's position. So Selvi Oyala will be the next Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity. And there is a, hopefully will be a five-month overlap of time, so Ms. Oyala can work closely with Rhoda and really have a smooth transition. And they work closely together already, so I think I'm excited about Ms. Oyala's start and having Rhoda mentor her.
Roger?
Well, then at least for the rest of the year, can we have a presentation every month?
Yeah.
In fact, she can sit in my chair.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. And yeah, and great, that's great news to hear. So, for the second time tonight, you know, for someone that is moving on to the next stage, we already have the role set. So, that's great not to have any long gaps in between. Anything else on that? Okay, so we can move on to the next point in our agenda, which is around the MAS/MASC joint conference update. Both, oh, I'm sorry, I already checked off, yes. Correction, let's go over the budget first, the FY twenty-five preliminary budget presentation.
All right, so, I have the pleasure this evening of sharing with the community and the committee the FY twenty-five preliminary budget. I think it's important to note that, you know, the budget really is a vehicle to accomplish the goals that we have established in our strategic plan, Vision Twenty-Twenty-Six. And really, we're about how the budget impacts the experience of students. So our mission is quite simple. It's educate, inspire, and challenge all students. Although simple, not easy to do, and something that we strive to work toward every day. And the vision is really about what we want our students to become when they graduate to the next school, the next grade level, eventually to the high school and college or career. And we want them to be excellent collaborators, critical and creative thinkers, communicators, socially and specifically engaged, growth-oriented, and healthy and balanced. As you well know, the budget is a process that begins early in August with the school committee thinking about its budget priorities and also the district leadership team thinking about how and what we would like to accomplish in the upcoming year. And the budget process really involves many people, from educators to principals to district leaders, to finally the school committee. And the budget is reflective of many hands and many opportunities for input and feedback. And then in October, all the budgets from directors and principals are then provided to the finance department. The finance department assembles the first preliminary budget and then the work continues. So this evening really is an opportunity to share with the school committee and community the preliminary budget. And I just would like to note that much work remains, that this is, this is one milestone, but there are many more milestones ahead in the weeks and months. So, it, it's hard to believe that it's December, the preliminary budget discussion. We, the school committee approval of the budget priorities and then the FY twenty-five preliminary budget is presented to the school committee. And then we continue the work of revising, discussing, and really making sure that the budget that, that is recommended to the school committee really achieves as many goals as possible and supports the student experience. The budget priorities the school committee establishes are really essential to the work that we do as a central office leadership team and as principals. It really helps us think about what we're trying to accomplish. And as we go through the budget process, it really provides us with some, some metrics to prioritize our requests and budget goals. So these are really important. And not every school committee in the Commonwealth has budget priorities. This is not something that every school committee works on. But just applaud the school committee for having priorities. It really helps the process internally. So, budget impacts for twenty-twenty-five that we are anticipating. The first is general education transportation. So currently, we are in the fourth year of a contract with NRT. And we had a three-year contract with an opportunity to extend for one year. We are in our fourth year. We also have another opportunity to extend to a fifth year. And what is built into the budget is a twenty percent increase on general education transportation costs because more conversations need to be had around what direction the school committee would like to take in terms of transportation for next year. And that, and one of the opportunities we have with transportation is that transportation also impacts Northborough and the region. And there is synergy between the three districts. So it's not, so it's, it's a conversation we need to have as committees. But obviously, Southborough has an important role in those conversations. We're also seeing a significant increase in cost of special education out of district tuition. So we are a member of the Asset Valley Collaborative, the Asset Valley Collaborative contracts for the transportation for its member districts. The collaborative is currently in the process of renewing its, it's going out to bid for transportation. So we are waiting to see what the impact will be in terms of costs. And we're also looking at our current routes and number of students and projecting out, we are anticipating a significant cost in, in special education out of district tuition, uh, transportation. Special education out of district tuition, also, last year we saw a fourteen percent increase in costs. We are anticipating seven percent increase, which is still high. The average of, year-over-year is approximately seven percent. And last year's impact of the fourteen percent increase on FY twenty-four budget was a little under three hundred thousand dollars. So it's, it's significant money, seven percent. Also includes that fourteen percent. So it's not just seven percent, it's seven percent on a fourteen percent increase of last year. So that is an impact to the budget that we are anticipating. Supplies and material costs, we have, we have seen inflation moderate, but we are still being impacted in certain purchases around supplies and material costs, specifically around curriculum purchases, the licensing models shifting and changing. So, no longer are we buying a single textbook that lasts for seven to ten years. Now we're getting into annual subscriptions and we are seeing that having an impact. And lastly, ESAR phase out. So FY twenty-four budget did include money from ESAR. We are required to expand ESAR funds by the end of FY twenty-four. We did our best to try to not include positions or create structural deficits with ESAR funds. But there is some work we need to do in, in offsetting purchases that we made that will impact FY twenty-five. So ESAR expenses for FY twenty-four, so staff and student devices, elementary math curriculum. We did shift a portion of ELA Coordinator's position, middle school math curriculum, Carnegie translations, science curriculum, and screening tools. So the total impact of ESAR on the FY twenty-four budget was a hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. So, budget variable, inflation. So the good news is that we are no longer at the point where we're dealing with seven percent or six-point-five percent inflation rates that had a significant impact on the value of our dollar and the purchasing value of, of the appropriated budget. We are seeing that moderate, which is good for the district and the community. So it's important to talk about the two types of budgets. So level-funded budget is basically using the appropriated amount in FY twenty-four, using that same amount in FY twenty-five, which means that if, if we move forward with a level-funded budget, we'd have to make reductions in staff, correct, on the other areas of the budget, actually bringing in a level-funded budget. The district has really not, since my tenure in the district, which is ten years and prior to that, has not had a level-funded budget. What we've, more often than not, we've experienced a level services budget with an incremental growth in certain areas. And basically, it's the funding that is required to maintain the same level of services as the prior fiscal year. So as we see cost of living adjustments, increases in costs to materials, typically we see a budget increase before we even add anything of two-point-five to three percent. Reviewing last year's budget process, this just shows, row by row, initial budget requests, preliminary budgets, the revised budget, and the school committee voted budget. So again, this just shows the process that takes place during the budget cycle. And last year at this time, the preliminary budget was at eight-point-seven-three percent. And the final school committee voted budget was a three-point-five percent increase over fiscal year twenty-three. So where we are today in comparison, so the appropriated budget for FY twenty-four was a little over twenty-three million. The initial budget requests from principals, directors, and central office, total of twenty-six million, six-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, or a fifteen-point-six-three percent. We then applied special education, circuit breaker reimbursement, as well as circuit breaker transportation reimbursement. And the preliminary budget we're presenting to the school committee and the community is twenty-five million, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, which reflects a ten-point-three-eight percent increase over fiscal year twenty-four. Just to create a baseline, you know, what is a one percent increase, a two percent increase over fiscal year twenty-four? So this just gives us a guidepost to understand, you know, if we were to cut two percent of the preliminary budget, what, what, how much do we have to find in terms of reductions? So this is a tool that we use internally, just to kind of give us a sense of, of a guidepost. So, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget priorities and projected costs. So we did look at the school committee's budget priorities as well as principals' and directors' budget priorities and really tried to put a dollar amount to those priorities. So the first priority is to add math specialists to support students in grades K through eight. It's four FTEs, one in each of the elementary schools. So that request or that priority totals three-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. Seek to expand fine and performing arts experiences to support students in grade K through eight. That's a budget priority. We feel that there could be a dollar amount there, but we also feel there's a lot we can do with current resources to achieve, continue to achieve that goal. Seek to maintain and enhance oral language programming in grades K through three to explain, to expand the FLESS program. So last year, we presented to the school committee having a, a multi-year plan to implement FLESS in our Southborough Elementary Schools. So as you know, we're in year one and an upcoming school committee will share information about how that's going. To add the second year, which is to add another full-time FLESS teacher, is eighty thousand dollars. And then lastly, seek to add health educators in grades K through five. You know, the value of health education is really important. The new curriculum frameworks really speak to the health domain as being really important. So as our health educators, our PE teachers are working through this, it's something that we are working closely with and Mary Ellen Duggan is leading this work. So the total budget priorities, the projected costs, we are projecting a total of six FTEs equalling four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. And these positions, I'll just be clear, are not included in the preliminary budget number of ten-point-three-eight percent increase. The next slide are requests from principals and directors of positions that they would like to see in the, in the budget. A point-two adaptive physical education teacher, so this position is, is shared among the three districts. It's point-six of a point-two, so the total is a little over six thousand dollars. And we have an assistant director of multilingual learners in equity. So, Rhonda does, has done an amazing job, but the job is very large. Part of the work that is really important, but really hard to, to move forward with because of capacity is really the work around equity. So, this request is to add an assistant director of multilingual learners in equity and Southborough's portion of that would be point-three. An ELD educator, so Rhonda talked about the different levels. So I think it's important to note that it's not the aggregate number. It's really where students fall within levels and what support they need. So this really is an ELD educator to really support the required education of our English language development program and department and students. We have a human resource generalist, so we have eight hundred employees across our three districts. So this is a point-three of the full-time position. The nurse occupational therapist, special educate, and occupational therapist and speech and language pathologist are to support specialized programming in the needs of students, specifically the CASL program. And the special education teacher was requested by one of the principals. So that's four-point-one-six additional educators for a total of three-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. If you add the six from the school committee budget priorities, it's an additional ten FTEs totaling a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. These positions are not included in the preliminary budget. What is included in the budget? You know, some of the budget impacts that we talked about are licensing of curriculum. So we're seeing a Witten Wisdom digital licenses. So this is an annual licensing fee for the software that we will see for the use of the Witten Wisdom curriculum. So that's six thousand three hundred, that is included in the budget. We also have a placeholder for middle school ELA curriculum. So we've implemented that ELA curriculum K through five. This, this is a placeholder for implementing a middle school ELA curriculum, six through eight. Envision math K through five, so this is just renewal for FY twenty-five. ST math K five, so that's an outstanding tool, that's an annual subscription. Second step SEL curriculum, K through eight, that is renewal of a subscription. And the middle school math curriculum, that's the renewal of the Carnegie, Carnegie user licenses. And lastly, student staff devices, so making sure that we are keeping up with the hardware replacement cycle that we have in, in place. So what's included in the budget for instructional materials is a little over a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So circuit breaker offsets, so circuit breaker for special education tuition reimbursement offset is one million, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. And also, the Student Opportunity Act allows districts to also seek reimbursement for special education transportation. So Southborough received eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. So the offset that already has been applied to the preliminary budget is a little over one-point-two million dollars. So, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget is twenty-five million, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, which is a budget increase of two million, three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars for a ten-point-three-eight percent increase over fiscal year twenty-four. So this is the historical budget increases. If we look from FY eighteen to FY twenty-four, I think our, our budget average is a little under three percent. And because we're not comparing all the preliminary budgets, if we had the preliminary budget request, we, we would see the anywhere between eight to twelve percent request at this point in time. So we're not askew where we typically are at this time for the preliminary budget presentation. But I just think we've been very conservative in our budget requests as a school committee. We've been educationally sound and fiscally responsible. But this isn't sustainable. And again, if you just look at inflation costs, salary increases, these budget increases have just kind of maintained what we've had. So with that said, we'd be happy to answer any questions and provide any clarity that is required.
Sure. So I have a question about this, you know, the additions that are not in there, which is about five or six percent if we were to add everything that was being asked, right? Are those additions something that would, so without those additions, are we still at a level? Are those additions something that would, so without those additions, are we still at a level services budget? Or it's not, because some of them look like it's potentially, like if we don't fund them, it's a loss of...
Yes, I think, I think there are some that are, you know, above a level services, some of these positions. So for example, the occupational therapist, point five, the speech and language pathologist, point five, there are some positions there that we need to, to move forward with. I would say of these positions, most are above a level services budget. Also, what we're working with principals is really to develop a five-year plan. So that if we take these ten positions, know we can't achieve all ten, adding them this year. Over a five-year period, we can really have these as goals and trying to move toward having these positions as part of our educational experience.
I have a follow-on on this chart. So when you take a position that is going to be shared, for example, assistant director of multilingual learners and equity. So we're sharing it with the other two districts, I guess I'll say. Now, we've got two towns that are going through the budget approval process for the schools. So and that, I doubt that that's ever exactly equal, you know, what you, what you face, you know, when you're working with Northborough versus working with Southborough. So what I'm trying to ask is how do you, I guess, juggle or a situation where the budget may be squeezed in one town more than the other, which could potentially affect one of the, you know, one of the shared resources? But can you just comment on, on, on the challenge of that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the value of being regionalized at the, at the high school level is we have shared positions, which result in cost savings. So, you know, everyone at this table, you know, before you, you know, Southborough pays thirty percent of our salaries. So the value to Southborough is you get a team and you pay thirty percent of superintendent. We work very closely with Northborough and the region, talking about what are those areas that if one district goes in a direction, it has an impact to the other districts? Transportation is another area. I will share that we, we try to have parity in budget processes. And what we, we are finding is there's some parity in where we are with preliminary budgets right now. And we're having parallel conversations with our Northborough colleagues and our, and our Southborough, Northborough regional colleagues. So it's the work that we do to try to coalesce and make decisions, even though they're independent, that they're in lockstep. So Northborough, if Southborough decided not to have this in the budget for fiscal year twenty five, it, it's a conversation I would have with the region and, and, and Northborough to say, do you want to pay fifty percent of this? And usually the answer is no, we want to move together and maybe this isn't the year.
Well, that would, that would suggest though that the school committee level, we might, we potentially have to be getting down to a part of a position. I'm not sure that that's what you see from the school committee, at least in the past, at least I don't think.
The value add is, yeah.
That granular, a, you know, I guess, a communication. And I think we, I think we all do recognize, as we do every year, that if we come out, if we come in with two consecutive three percent budget increases, even though on the surface it looks level, the last year is based on a higher base. So it's, it is more dollars from, you know, the taxpayers, but that's not something that they don't understand and it's not something that we don't understand either.
Yeah, I think that, so I think the short answer is we work, we as a team work very closely with all the committees in the three districts to, you know, have a shared vision and articulate the why and what the impact is, what the impact is to programming. And then how does it relate to impacting what students experience and eventually, most importantly, what students impact in the classroom?
Thank you.
I think one thing, one observation to note is the proposed timelines that you have in the last column. So that's an update and there's room for us as a committee to say what looks, you know, amiable and what does not. So if you could see there, you know, the HR generalist is for FY twenty three. There's, there's many that are pushed, like slated for twenty five. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on that. I mean, it's something that I requested to be shown, but if you have any questions or comments, we can discuss it.
Oh, I do.
Yeah.
So, and I guess this is, this is again from how the district, you know, manages its part of this. Is it necessarily true that because something has been there since twenty three? It's, it's something the district will consider more of a priority simply because it's older than twenty four, or is that really not true?
Yes, so we, so internally, the leadership team, we spend a lot of time looking at the budgets, preliminary budgets. We spent a lot of time talking about the positions and where they fall in priority. We talk about impact to students in the classroom. So no, it doesn't mean if it was asked for FY twenty three and, and again, asked for FY twenty four and not funded. What it means to me is that there are other priorities that we feel impacts the student experience that are, that are more important. However, we think it is important at some time, you know, to, to look at these. So we, part of it is just not to forget, but I think, I think the next, the next layer of work, the next level of work for us, for the committee and for the district leadership team is to really continue to fine tune the budget numbers, that these are preliminary numbers. I think we internally are having more meetings, we're prioritizing, we're actually talking about, you know, if, if we're going to build a five-year plan, what does it look like? What does year one look like? What year, what would year one, how would it impact the budget in terms of a percent increase? So many more internal conversations need to be had. The finance team is really sharp running pencils and making sure that we have good, accurate data. There's a twenty percent increase on transportation that's built into this model. That's a conversation we need to have moving forward at the next special meeting, special open meeting. Because special education transportation and general education transportation, just those two line items account for almost a two and a half to three percent increase on the budget. So it's, it's significant.
Okay. Do we, is there a value in, I guess this depends on, so if you go to the, the prior slide to that, you know, that these have been pulled out separately, like is, should we be including some of these in that initial budget number, right? Is my question, because now, like the way it's presented, it's almost like we can just easily say, well, we'll consider that for something in the future. I don't know if there's an, if there's anything on that particular list that the district thinks is a priority.
I would, really, this, this meeting really is helpful for us to get some direction, you know, for this whole committee to say, here's, here's what we want you to consider and think about. Because they're not included, if we think about prior budget processes, we, this process has been the same and there have been requests on the budget parties where we've added positions. And it's a conversation that we have throughout the budget process. For example, the FLESS educator last year was not necessarily included in the regular budget process. So I would ask for some direction from the school committee. We could add these positions in and see what the overall increase is, like you said, it's almost two percent.
Go ahead, yeah.
So on the math specialists, as you're going through kind of your five-year plan, does it make sense to maybe look at doing two for next year, split them between the schools and at least start the program? I think there's a lot of value in having those specialists for the students for, for a variety of reasons?
Yes, so that's the type of thinking we are doing internally, like, okay, what would one, what impact would one have? Where are we in terms of looking at our math curriculum and doing a curriculum review? So we are, those are the conversations that we're having and yes, you know, that is, those are possibilities.
Okay. On the world language, I know I wasn't on the committee when you decided to do this next, last year. But I think, obviously, I'd like to hear how the program is going. From what I, I hear a lot of Spanish words in my house, which is great. But I think the, the sentiment there was that it would continue in, at Woodward. So from my perspective, I think that would be one that we would probably seriously consider keeping.
I support that.
Just for continuity, because I don't think it does the kids any good if they haven't K one and then they don't get it until, I'm not sure when.
Yeah.
And then if, you can just flip back to the, the next slide for a second. So my thoughts on this one are, I'd like to know from the student perspective, what risks we have by not adding these? I'm primarily looking at the first one and then the bottom four, I think, and maybe the ELD educator. I just want to understand, kind of, are we gonna miss kids? Are they not gonna get the services, enough hours of the services that they need? That's kind of where I'm at with that slide.
And those are all great questions and those are the questions we're asking internally too. So through our internal process, we can gather that information.
Okay.
And, you know, part of the work that we do internally is what are the, the different pathways to accomplish the goals? So it's not always layering on one way, it's really what resources do we have? And can we accomplish this goal thinking in a different way? So that, those are conversations that are happening and those are the types of questions we're asking. So we definitely, you know, when we have, we have our next special open meeting, we can talk about what we're thinking and what the impact is if we don't do something, or what another solution is to achieving the goal.
During that next upcoming special meeting, one of the things too is asking, like going, as a leadership team, like actually going to the like personal level of, you have an occupational therapist today, or three of them. But they really cannot go one more year without assistance or they, attrition will happen, et cetera. Or maybe the reverse is true, that they, they have expressed that they could sustain additional. However, our pathology team is stretched to the brink and they just cannot sustain. That sort of nuance would be helpful and it really just, you have to go to the individual, like to the individual level of who's on the team today and what can, I would like to hear back from you, like what it is that they can support without the negative impact to the students, right? And also around the cost, you know, I'd see the, the top line of the, the sentiment I just shared, I think also goes to the physical ed teacher. So I just wanted to say that. Anything else, Roger?
So can I just make a comment? So I think, I think it's a great point and it illustrates the conversations, the through line of conversations that we have and talking with educators, really evaluating, looking at the data, what's the caseload, what's the model? Working with our student support services team and saying, is there another way to? So it is this, this conversation that involves a lot of stakeholders and a lot of looking at data to try to see, okay, the data supports, so we def, we don't have a choice, we have to add. Or the data supports, maybe if we have a different caseload model or diff, different instructional delivery model, maybe we can accomplish more, we're trying to set up to accomplish. So I think it's a great question and, and again, we can provide more data at the, the next meeting.
Um, so if there's nothing else, yeah, Z does have something.
Just the one question on that slide. So for the shared positions, what kind of discussion have you, have you had with the other two committees or, you know, the, across the districts?
Are we the first?
Yeah, so we, so we presented the preliminary budget in Northborough a week ago today. We'll present the preliminary budget to Algonquin a week from today. And we're also having special open meetings. And we're also having internal leadership teams with each of those organizations to try to, again, build five-year plans, prioritize, think outside the box in preparation for the special meetings that we'll have every next week.
Can I?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a statement, I, I think with my personal preference, I think would be to try and add, even if it's a split, you know, the math specialist and the world language, because that's, we've listed as a high priority of putting that in the prelim. I mean, it's a huge number, it's a large number already, right, I think, but if we compare it to where we, it's, it's maybe like one point three, one point six higher than where we were last year. But I think that sends a message that these are like really important things that need to get funded, my preference. The other thing is that, you know, we also, I think, want to be mindful of potential building plans. And so if we're saying, well, let's implement this in a five-year plan and then, you know, three years from now, we're also then overlapping with potentially what would be a huge capital project, what's the likelihood of that, us being able to implement these other things which are pretty important?
And the potential of, you know, if, if there is a great reconfiguration, you know, we don't want to overstaff, we want to think about to the future. So I think that's really an important point. We want to really build a plan that also looks at the larger context of what type of facilities could we be managing as well.
Any more feedback for, for the team? All right, more to come on that. So...
And just want to thank the finance team too, it's, they're running three budgets and preparing for three budgets and then trying to manage three budgets. And they're doing a great job.
Thank you, Becky. And so the next thing on our agenda is a discussion on the joint conference that was held last month. And for that topic, I can give some feedback, I was able to attend. And if the leadership team would like to give some feedback, they were able to attend as well. But we were in different, some different sessions. From the school board perspective, both, there was a representative from each, Northborough, Southborough, as well as the region. There was a, you know, a full three days worth of agenda and we, you kind of, a little bit collaborated on what it is that we could all attend or attend separately so we could bring in the most information. I really would like to summarize everything that I experienced that day and like put it into a written PowerPoint and just like share some key points with you all. So I would, you know, I'm gonna ask that we have this on an agenda item again, so I can do that. But I'll just say that for sentiment wise, it was something that I wish I had attended earlier in terms of in earlier in my tenure here. And I left there feeling very motivated and, you know, a lot of tools taken away in terms of like what it is that we should, can do. How it is that, over those three days, I had to sit and, you know, either be in a room of two or three, of two or me by myself in those training sessions, but meeting with folks from around Massachusetts was also excellent too, to hear what was happening. But meeting with folks from around Massachusetts was also excellent too, to hear what was happening in their districts. For example, some of the meetings that I went to were around the busing situation in Worcester and they gave a full-out, nuts and bolts presentation on just how they got to the point, you know, how their issues started and how they got to the point that they're in today. So that was really informative, but they also gave like action steps. They said, don't take our word for it. You know, if this is something that you're curious about, here's a, you know, a spreadsheet you can utilize to do these types of equations to figure out if this is a fit for you or not. So it kinda gave people the tools to get started. I also went to another discussion that talked about just how, like, the, the food in, in our schools and what it is that's being provided and all the different options and vendors and services and how we could bring in some more like local collaborations into that. So that was really interesting. I went to probably one of the best training sessions I went to in the last several years that was on equity. And, you know, I left there with like a full booklet of notes. And one of the things that I walked away from there with was that oftentimes when we talk about diversity and equity in the education setting, it brings about like a tense feeling. And this, 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 you know, leader that gave the discussion, she kinda broke it down into like the types of recipients that we are to this information and she used an acronym for that. So I would love to like, you know, tell us some more, tell you all some more about that. One of the things that I noted was she said, folks don't fear change, they fear loss. There's, you know, there's a, maybe some sense of loss that they think is about to happen if something changes. And that was something that I took both into my business life as well as what we're doing here in the school committee. And then, you know, there was another workshop around leadership tools, like just how, what, what are some of the different leadership tools that we should be utilizing as a chair or vice chair? And that was helpful, let me see things that I am, we're already doing and then also some opportunities for improvement. So that's kind of like a verbal snapshot of what the forum was like. I got it, but overall, I would say, if you hadn't thought about in the past and you thought, because I did, like, where would I find the time? You're overnight, it's, there's some distance there. It was well worth it in terms of knowledge and partnerships that you could potentially make with other districts. So that was, that was worthy, but I'll turn it over to you, because you, you had a different perspective.
Yeah, so although we attended a couple of the same sessions, I too attended the Worcester Public Schools presentation of how they took on transportation. So they own their transportation department and buses. And so that was fascinating to hear their journey to get to that point. A little overwhelming, but fascinating. And then Stephanie and I also attended a workshop or session with Chris Heran, who's done some work with our school committee around communicating in polarizing times. So that was, that was an excellent session. Walked away with some really pragmatic action steps that I could apply. And then also attended a panel of districts who've implemented the literacy, the new literacy, science of reading, and just listened to how they implemented the science of reading and what changes they are making. So that also, also made me proud, because I think our teachers and our curriculum leaders and Maggie Kelty have all done an amazing job. And I would say we are ahead of many of what was presented, but it was always nice to hear where people are and where we are in comparison. And I think my, my takeaway from the conference too is I always enjoy connecting with the school committee members and other superintendents and other colleagues and other school committees. You, you get a different perspective that is, makes you wonder, makes you think, oh, that's really neat how they do it. Or, I don't never, I don't wanna do it that way. So it was time well spent.
Um, I attended some of the same workshops and then another additional workshop was led by a panel of leaders from Needham Public Schools about their work around equity and equity, diversity, inclusion and kind of their decision to not have a person who is in charge of that, but rather to have that be the whole leadership team's responsibility. And so they talked about kind of their approach in that respect, which was interesting. And then I think the others were ones that we've already talked about. What are the other they have talked about?
And the last thing I'll share is in the packet also is the results of the delegation. So the votes for each of those. Kristen Teigen from the Northborough School Committee attended that, she said it was an experience. She's, they, I think the resolution around mandating that every district have a director of equity was one that there was a lot of heated debate and conversation. She, and she left early, 10 minutes early, she didn't know when it was gonna end because it felt like forever. And then they tabled it and then basically shortly thereafter voted to adjourn. So I don't think they got through all of the resolutions.
Another takeaway was that at the conference, it was, you know, an opportunity for you to be around other boards. And we really just said, you know, we are volunteers. And, but the passion that everyone was expressing, you know, there's a lot of opportunities to raise your hand or stand up for questions or, you know, kinda give a statement. And, but in the casual moments, we had opportunities to say, oh, okay, you're from Southborough or you're from this, this town, you know, someplace closer in Boston and, you know, good job with what you guys are doing down there. Or, you know, oh wow, you have a really big district. Like there was some empathy and encouragement that was happening. That sometimes, you know, you, you don't get that. And so it was a really nice opportunity to be in this like space of belonging where we all had like a shared, shared experience. We all, yeah, I could say that was, that was the thing. Like everyone had the shared experience of being on a Massachusetts school board, where that comes with certain responsibilities and certain community engagement. So that's, that's, that's it.
We want a vote for a delegation leader for next year.
That's not on the agenda, so, but I want you to take it all in and think about it for next year. Next thing is a great part of our agenda, approval of grants and/or donations. I can go through each bullet unless you have some sort of overview you wanted to provide, okay? So the first one is a donation of 18, I'm gonna call them spools of yarn, to the Trotiere Middle School Crocheting Club from Coats and Clark's Company, approximate value $4.50 each, a total of approximate value of $81. And in the principal's update, you talked about how the crocheting club, the work that they were doing. So that is one. I'll do them all together. A donation of donated yarn also to Trotiere Middle School Crocheting Club from the First Congregational Church in Shrewsbury, total approximate value of $54. And thirdly is a donation of various individual donations of yarn to the Trotiere Middle School Crocheting Club, total approximate value of $70. I will take a vote to see, for approval of those donations. All in favor? Oh, can I have a motion? Okay, sorry. Go ahead, can I have a motion to approve this?
Sure, so I'll move that the school committee approve the donations of $81 from Coats and Clark's, $54 from First Congregational Church and $70 from various individual donations.
Do I have a second?
Second, yes, I think, total 128.50.
Thanks, Roger.
Okay. Thank you.
I couldn't do it better.
I'll read it slower.
So the motion was made and seconded. Do we have, can I do all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of approving? Okay, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you. And thank you to those organizations, I can't wait to see what the students come up with and find them all around town on a bench or somewhere. So, next in our agenda is old business. Do we have the MSBA update?
Sure, so this past Thursday, the MSBA Board of Directors met to interview, not to interview, to, to go through the process of selecting, helping us select a designer for an area building project. In attendance were the Chair of the Area Building Committee, Mark Purple, Roger on behalf of the school committee, and also me. So the, the way it worked was that
The owner's project manager.
And Skanska, Representative for Skanska. So the district, there were 13 Board of Director members who were voting members and then there were three, the district received three votes. So we engaged in the process and as a result, we identified three firms to interview. So those three firms will be interviewed on December 19th with the MSBA board. So Roger, Jason Malinowski, Skanska and I will be joining that meeting and we'll, and Mark will, and we'll interview the firms. And then with the outcome of hopefully deciding on the best firm for the town of Southborough to move forward with. And then the next phase is to engage in contract with, with that firm.
If I could just add, interview the firms with the MSBA representatives, which again are the vast majority of the terming group that will decide on a designer.
So we are three sixteenths.
You got him.
I actually don't think everyone showed up from the MSBA last time. So we might be three fourteenths or three fifteenths.
So we are excited about the process, it's a, it's a really important milestone. And I think, you know, once, once a designer is selected and is on board, that's when I think the real work will begin in terms of community engagement input and around what does this next iteration of school facility look like in Southborough.
And this subcommittee alone can be disbanded if that.
And the DSSC can be disbanded.
Is that a segue, you can segue into the Trotiere paving project, I know we have a memo on it.
Yes, so I just wanted to have a further conversation around a paving project. I just wanna acknowledge in the audience, the Southborough Superintendent DPW, Bill Conduff, so he's been a, a great partner along this journey. I'll note that this project really began pre-Mister Conduff. So he is, he inherited it and is helping shepherd it to success. So what I'll do is just have Becky talk about the financials and where we are at our line in the memo.
Sure, so and also included in your packet was an outline of the, the costs for the project so far. We had been billed by Lazaro for a total of $242,292.55. And that's broken down really into three components. The first was the original, I think, project that was put out to bid and that would include the Trotiere backlot as well as the Trotiere, the front and the side lot access. In comparison on that spreadsheet that I gave you, I did put what the original bid number was on the right-hand column as compared to what we were actually billed. And you will see that on the backlot, that there was a difference because of the square yardage of about just under $20,000 between those two. We were also billed for some additional items that were not, I guess, issued a prior approval. There were some drainage structures, some gate boxes, and then also a berm and then the furnishment and the installation of straw waddles. And so those additional billed items totaled just under $20,000. And then we had actually worked with Lazaro on some walkway repairs to bring our walkways into ADA compliance. And so that additional amount was approved by the district and that was $16,800. So again, the total that we've been billed to date was $242,000. What the district has paid so far is the original bid amount, which was the 64,490 dollars, the 122,670 dollars. And those were for the paving of both the backlot and the front lot as well as the pre-approved walkway repair. So we have paid $203,960. So there is a difference between what has been billed to the district and what has been paid of about $38,000.
So I will add that Mr. Conduff did negotiate with Lazaro, resulting in $225,492 reduced to $211,369. So right now, the difference is $7,409.59 that, you know, is a decision for the school committee if we wanna pay that amount. I just will also add that this, this amount, although it seems, you know, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it is thousands of dollars, also go, is in context with mold mitigation that we are experiencing. When the school committee voted to approve the, moving forward with this project, it voted to approve $187,160, which was the information that we were provided at the time. This money is coming out of our revolving account, which I think is, our balance is concerning at this point. That is, is the account where if there's any type of small emergency where we go to, to fund a repair or, you know, hire a consultant to help us out.
Any conversation on that?
Okay.
I could add those grants up, but I can't, these are bigger numbers. So we, so I'm just curious, the plus $16,800 that we paid, how, how was it determined that we should pay it? Is that because that's, that's unreasonable overage that you felt was fair at the time?
That, that was actually something we asked the contractor to do.
I think, I, sorry.
Sorry.
I think a couple of things. I think the way this project and past projects were managed in terms of bid processes and including the town, it was not always clear. It wasn't always clear who was signing the change orders, who was, who was leading the project. So that lack of clarity and a transition, again, pre-Mister Conduff, resulted in a lot of, of lack of clarity. The contractor had a conversation with the district around these ADA improvements. You know, we've had conversations with Bill since, since we authorized those, saying, if he was here, leading this project, he would have been the person having the conversation and saying, no, this is part of the bid package. So two things, I think one of the things is where we are cleaning up a project, a process that wasn't as organized as we would have liked it to be in terms of if the town's taking this on, they are signing everything and they're communicating with us and that is being led by the DPW. So it was signed by us. It shouldn't have been signed by us, but it was. And therefore, as a result, we feel it's our responsibility to move forward with at least that, that payment.
Kamala just pointed out to me that I need to read it a little better because I can see now what it was, uh, that you've explained kind of logic and kind of, uh-
I mean, I think in general-
It was determined to pay it.
Yeah, I think a general comment is, it benefits the School District and the town to partner on many, uh, capital projects. We want to continue to partner with the town on capital projects, however, we, we cannot continue to partner in the way we have in the past. This is the second project that we have partnered with, um, the town, again, pre, pre-Mr. Condeff, that has resulted in significant overco, overruns of, of what was projected, and the assumption is the school has money to go and pay the, the difference. We don't have reserve funds, we don't, our appropriated budget is our appropriated budget. The reason why I think it's important for the School Committee to talk about context is because we had mold mitigation resulting in a hundred thousand dollars in unexpected expenditures, we don't have that in a reserve account to be able to pay. So, it's, it's seven thousand dollars on top of, if mold mitigation didn't happen, we, we probably would be having, we wouldn't have this conversation, probably would have just been like, okay, we can, we have a good reserve fund, we can handle it, but the context is probably, is what I'm concerned about.
The reason for the conversation would still have been important, right, even if you hadn't had the mold mitigation.
Is, I was gonna ask, is there any, um, co, um, comments that the new leader can share with us that would help provide some, I don't know, confidence, or, you know, understanding to like the new, uh, role that he will take in making sure not, that these vast overages don't occur again, and are you, are we, are you guys open to having, would you have any comments that you'd like to share?
Sure. Bill Condeff, DPW Superintendent.
Bill, one second, would you mind just, probably just to show you more of the data.
Actually, if you want to come sit here.
Sorry, I was gonna say.
Sure, thank you. Thank you. Bill Condeff, DPW Superintendent, um, I want to say, the project was a good project, and it was scoped properly, um, the contractor was requested to modify the scope during the project, um, that request came from, I can't pin down a source, the paper trail is not great, um, there was a transition period with the person in my position, we had a temporary there, and, you know, so, so really, no one was really there for the project at my level. Given that, I have spent a lot of time going through, inspecting the work that's been done, and I've satisfied myself that the invoice that we negotiated down from that original two hundred thousand dollar number, um, I'm satisfied Lazaro did all that work, and I'm satisfied that Lazaro was directed to do that work. So, what we're asking for at this point is the seven thousand five hundred dol, or roughly seven thousand four hundred dollars to be made whole, we can close out this contract, this sort of issue will not happen again, um, as I've discussed with the Superintendent. If the town does a project with the School District again, I will be the point person, and if the school wants a change, they're gonna talk to me, not the contractor, or we'll at least have a joint conversation. So, change orders, there's a very specific process that needs to occur during a change order, and that process was not followed. The changes were requested, the changes were done, it added cost to the scope, so, at this point, uh, you know, the decision is yours, but I'm satisfied that the contractor did the work, my recommendation is that they get paid for the work that they did, I'd like to maintain a good working relationship with them.
Thank you, it was good to hear that, thank you. Do you have any questions or?
Can I just make a comment? So, I think there were a few lessons learned, hard lessons for us on this one, um, and, you know, I think Greg's, um, approach to it is accurate, that we still want to continue to get efficiencies by going in with the town. If you look at the original bid package that was presented to the Select Board last winter, it, we would not have been able to afford this project-
If it wasn't for-
-in three years. Like, so, it's, it's really unfortunate that it was twenty-nine percent over the original amount that we thought it was gonna be, and I think with, uh, Mr. Condeff's leadership, working with, um, Greg, I hope that we never have this conversation again, but I also do think that there were cost savings, that we, we were not gonna be able to fund this, um, out of the revolving account, I think it would have had to go to, you know, to capital and, uh, through appropriation, um, through taxes, so, um, I just wanted to point that out, that I, I know it's a hard pill to swallow, it's not good timing with the fin mold mitigation, but, um, the amount was much less than, than, um, what it could have been.
Roger, were you interested in sharing anything, saying anything, okay?
No, I mean, I sense that, um, that, that the, the district is, um, is, um, feels that this is the right thing to do, and- To, to, without a doubt, what Chelsea said, that it's a lot less than it started out to be, so that's, uh, that's very good news.
So I think-
Thanks to the DPW Supervisors' efforts to get the cost down, and it's great.
So we previously approved a bid for the one eighty-seven plus, um, we wanna now, um, kinda approve this additional thirty-eight K as a, as a committee, um-
Yes, I think the difference, the, and I don't think it's a vote, I think it's just you have verbal acknowledgement that, you know, yes, we, you know, we should move forward, I think that Bill has worked really hard on, on trying to, hey, maintain a relationship with a paving company, and really try to, uh, get value add, uh, and make sure we have the prices right. I do feel we are, seven thousand dollars is, uh, I, I'd love to move on and look to the future, um, you know, I think at some point, uh, I'm going to request the meeting with Mark Purple, and Bill, and Keith, and Becky, and we can sit down and talk about, you know, let's come up with a protocol, like, this is the steps, we want to be part of pre-construction meetings, we want to be, you know, we want Bill to lead, lead it, but we want to have, we want to make sure there are controls so that we, there are not unexpected, uh, cost overruns, and when we sign a, a change order, it goes through Bill, goes to Mark Purple, and it's agreed upon, uh, so, the process is what we're gonna screw.
Okay, so, um, I'll frame it as, um, does anyone object to us continuing to move forward with this, um, project in partnership with DPW and with the, um, now known change of costs?
Well, I have a question, so there's no, there's really no other option or alternative, right, because we can't exactly, I mean, the work's been done, and they have to be paid, what?
Yeah, I mean, I would have a, a conversation with the Town Administrator, and say, this is what we agree to, and, you know, that, that would be the next step, I'm not sure what the outcome would be, um, so that is, you know, that is, would be the next step, I, and I'm not recommending that, um, I think, um, again, we've had a successful partnership, a collegial partnership, um, with the town, and we want to continue that, and we're, um, going to continue that, so I think this is just goodwill, um, in terms of moving forward, and as Bill said, the work was done, so, we would never have been able to do this project, um, using a reserve fund because of the, the cost it could have been.
One last point, um, D, and then Roger.
Yeah, I just have a simple technical question, so the, uh, the score you are estimating for the backlot, like, is very different than the actual one, so, so this could, could have been easily avoided, so hardly that, because this accounted for about twenty thousand
Right. May I? The lion's share of the cost was, we, we had two different types of paving work done out in the parking lot, a small area of about twenty-five hundred square yards was gonna be reclaimed and paved, that's about four inches of asphalt, um, the remainder was, and I, I have the number, but, a lar, much larger area was just milling and paving, which is about an inch and a half of asphalt. We, we nearly doubled the amount of the four-inch reclamation work, so that was the lion's share of the cost. We also had to erect some erosion controls, because you're surrounded by wetlands here, and those weren't anticipated, there were a few drainage structures that needed to get replaced, and that's it.
Go ahead, um, can you, uh, Leonard? Okay.
I was just gonna follow up on that question, why is it that when they originally, uh, put the bid in, that they didn't know, was this an unexpected, the increase in amount of asphalt, isn't that something they should have projected?
It, it, it wouldn't be the contractor, it would have been in the bid documents, and I can't speak to why they used the quantities and areas, I, I don't even know what it was like before, so I, I can't answer that.
It's really unfortunate, yeah, go ahead.
And that's, I think, the reason we shouldn't have discomfort about not objecting to this is, you know, as, as we know, um, we have a much larger issue that we want the town to work with us on, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to not work with them, you know, because somebody's gonna have to pay, okay, to, on, on, on the small issue, um, you know, the mold mitigation is gonna be, you know, you know, I think, a, a more important, um, fiscal issue for us, um.
Let's, um, keep a close watch on this, I think, and also, um, in our conversations going forward, um, you know, if someone needs a reminder about this decision of, uh, potential non-objection tonight, Greg, please remind them, um, I'm saying that as, you know, nicely as I can, but, you know, let's not forget that we, this has occurred, so that when we have these discussions about mold mitigation, budget twenty-five that's coming up, these are the things that need to be considered by, uh, partners. See, I think, thank you for asking that question, that was, um, a good, um, observation and question, um, I don't want anyone to feel pigeonholed, but, you know, if you are okay with, I would just wanna just, one more time, ask, is there any-
You could take a vote, it doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
That memorializes it.
Okay, um, would you like to make, would you mind if I make an impression?
So the amount is, um, seven four zero nine fifty-nine, so seven thousand four hundred nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Seven four oh nine fifty-nine. And that's the number that we're actually, because the rest has already been doubled, and it's a lot smaller number thanks to Bill, so thank you, yeah. So I would move that we approve the additional expenditure, uh, for the paving project of seven thousand four hundred and nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Moved by Roger?
Second.
Second by Chelsea, any additional conversation? All in favor? Okay, we have unanimous?
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
You too, good luck.
Yes. Uh, so, right now, we're gonna go into the Superintendent's report, um, if anyone needs to be dismissed, otherwise, um, okay.
Keith, Keith, sorry, he already, he predicted that.
Um, all right, so go ahead, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, so in your packet is the enrollment report, um, I think no significant variances, and the report is as of eleven fifteen twenty-three. So we are, we are monitoring enrollment for fiscal year twenty-five very closely, part of the budget for, for FY twenty-five is looking at, um, the number of sections needed and the number of teachers needed to meet the enrollment demands. Also in your packet is the, um, monthly general fund expenditure report, um, and several other reports that Becky will provide around finances.
Okay, sorry, I just closed, um, all my numbers, just doesn't, you were turning it over to me, so.
You were heading home.
She's dismissed herself. Dismissed, so, um, so yes, uh, we do continue to closely monitor the Southborough operation budget, um, you will notice that as of November thirtieth, we have two hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars remaining, or one point two six percent. That number is down just over one hundred thousand dollars from the October thirtieth report, um, and in comparison to where we were last year at this time, we did have eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, or three point seven seven percent remaining. I will say that I think the finance team has done an excellent job in terms of encumbering our known expenses for the year, um, and the biggest differences between the October report and the November report are, um, that there was a, there's a custodial salary line item adjustment where an open, um, custodial position was not yet encumbered for the prior reporting period, and then also, um, in terms of the employee separation costs, we did receive an additional retirement notice for the end of fiscal year twenty-four, um, we typically budget those funds in our teacher salary line item, however, we are now breaking it out, and we have a separate, um, line item for employee separation costs, that brings us in alignment with the DESI chart of accounts, and it also makes it easier when we're compiling our end-of-year report to, um, have those numbers readily available, so those two, um, line items accounted for most of that, um, of that budget line item increase. And then I also just want to point out to the committee that last month, we did report that we have encumbered an additional seventy-five thousand dollars, um, in anticipation, or just in case, um, there are other expenses that are related to the mold mitigation at FIN, so those numbers are included in that bottom line, um, and, well, we do not have any plans for them, they are there just in case of emergency.
We also have encumbered the, uh, additional cost of having the multilingual, Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity overlap with RODA, so that is also covered in this, in this amount. So when we, when the exercise that Becky and I, um, completed, we, we factored in all of these, um, encumbrances and compared it to fiscal year twenty-three, um, and we, we are close, closely in line, so, um, at this point, you know, we're, we're tracking as we anticipated.
We're comfortable.
Becky, I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, are we, um, you noted that you found out about an additional retirement, um, how late are, are people giving notices until regarding their retirement?
Our, our teacher's contract does have a January fifteenth date for people to give us notices, um, but we always like them earlier, um, and I think, um, in the Southborough contract, there is an incentive to, um, provide that earlier as well, because I think those stipends are limited to like the first few people who actually put in for retirement.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Um, if you want to vote on the, uh-
Yes.
Do you want a motion on that?
Oh, sure, yeah, thank you, Roger.
So I'll move that, um, we approve those Southborough Public Schools for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget, monthly general fund expenditure report as of November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three until August.
I second that, um, so moved by Roger, seconded by myself, um, all in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, um, to S R three, uh, on the second page of the, um, report that's been provided to the School Committee, you'll notice that we now have, um, eight thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars remaining in our S R three funds, um, the, the purchases that were made over the past month, um, were for classroom supplies for the FIN schools, um, we did talk about the classroom rugs that we were purchasing, um, to replace those that were damaged, um, so those funds may actually be returned to the S R grant, um, dependent on, uh, what happens with the mold mitigation and the town, um, and then we also have purchased, um, materials for the FLESS program, um, at FIN as well. In terms of the revolving accounts, um, so the facility rental account, you will notice, um, that when we began the year, we had about two hundred and seventy-four thousand, and I just want to point out to the committee that I did put a, um, updated, um, sheet on here because I, um, noticed a little bit of- because I noticed a little bit of an error on the report that was provided in your packet. So we did begin with two hundred and seventy-four thousand at the beginning of the year. We've taken in just over forty-two thousand in revenues. Our expenses have been two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. The majority of that is the Trotiere paving that we just discussed, the two hundred and four thousand. And then we also did have to do a hot water heater here at Trotiere. That was about eighteen thousand dollars. And then we have a small encumbrance for four hundred and seventy-five thousand, I'm sorry, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, which gives us a balance of just under eighty-seven thousand dollars in the facility rental account. And that will be the account that we will make that last payment to the paving company from. In terms of our extended day, we are in a good place. We're actually slightly ahead of where we were last year at this time when we had just under one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as our fund balance. Really, the majority of those expenses are payroll. You know, we do see expenses related to food supplies and curriculum materials, but the majority of that is payroll. And our revenue is tracking at where we expect it to be.
Yes, uh, Roger. Thanks, Becky. On the revenue for the facility rental, do you see that picking up before the end of the fiscal year? Or kind of what's the cycle for what the revenue looks like for that?
So there will be a little bit more. We do build Aspet Valley Collaborative Rent Space in both Trotiere and also Woodward. And so they pay that twice a year. So we will see that second payment. They've already made one. And at this point in time, the other two districts have paid already the central office rental. So, you know, we probably won't see much more for the rest of the year.
And we don't have anything except for FIN mold mitigation kind of lingering out there right now in terms of expenses for facility rental?
Not that we're aware of.
We don't have a plan for it?
No, no.
No, okay. And the goal is to keep that fund balance at what?
What's a healthy?
In the past, we've always been around the two hundred thousand mark. So I think it's something that we now need to probably reevaluate.
So, so some of the conversations we're having around extended day is charging back for using space. I know it's within our district, but it's a self-funding program. So we're looking at, you know, what is, what is a healthy fund balance for extended day? And getting a sense of that. And then looking at charging back for renting of space. So, you know, I know there was a concern when the district took on the extended day program, we would lose that revenue. There still is a mechanism for us to actually continue to receive that revenue. So that's something we're working on. And also with extended day, I'll just mention too, we are, we are looking at the summer program that, you know, I think it's really important for our community to still have a summer program. And we're looking at the cost. You know, we talked, I think, when we presented the information in September, the cost of the summer program was mentioned by several committee members. I think it was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're having conversations internally around, you know, we can't, we can't continue to run the summer program at that cost. What are, what are our opportunities? So we have had some cursory conversations with our extended day staff, but also some conversations with the town, like is there, is there an opportunity for partnership? With, you know, for example, Town Rec. So we're, we are having those conversations that are very preliminary. Keith is facilitating those. But I just want to let the committee know that we'll have some information for you to kind of think about at its, at its January meeting.
Thank you for sharing that. And I was just gonna say, that's gonna come around sooner than, than we know it. And in terms of summer programs in this, what do we call it, South Metro West area? January?
Yes.
Is when folks begin making their summer determinations for their children. And so we, we kinda wanna have those discussions and have a plan for our extended day program. The other thing is, in terms of looking at comparable, so I like the idea about talking about partnerships, but also looking at comparable offerings. You know, like I would say, cast a wide net. And, you know, because the, there's only a handful locally and they're just out of the realm. They're not a one-to-one comparison for what S E D B offers. So start to look at the YMCA's and such and then see where it is that we want to swing in terms of value, cost value from there. As a user of all of those programs, I'm just telling you from, from experience.
Yeah, and I, Keith, do you wanna share anything?
No. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it's, it's one of those topics that we have to be ve- very careful about. I think we, we have done a really great job with this transition. We heard a little, and we're gonna hear a little more shortly about a survey that went out to S E D B families about the transition, about the programming, and we are in a, a good position. So as this conversation moves forward, we wanna make sure that that integrity is upheld.
Yeah, and there are some non-negotiables. There are some things that happen in our summer program that if, if, you know, a partnership can't include those, then, you know, we have to really look at what are the non-negotiables. We have a pretty good idea around flexibility hours and so forth, so. But preliminary conversations, I think now, to your point, now is a time to look at it. It's not a, it's not a February, March, April conversation because people are planning. So we'll, we'll have those internal conversations and try to see if partnerships, you know, can be created and provide more information in January.
Roger?
So just, I'd just like to make a comment since Keith mentioned successful transition. So I guess this, we've done this for a year now. And I, I'd just like to compliment, through Keith, the entire staff, when we think back about the angst and, you know, projected critical comments, okay, about this direction, and, and look now at how well it's been handled. I just hope you pass on, you know, to your team that they did a terrific job.
Yeah, I will absolutely do that, Roger. It is a full compliment to the team for, you know, the direct work that they do with the kids and the families on a day-in, day-out basis. And, you know, coming out of the pandemic and with the transition and all that has been incorporated, you know, it has been handled very well to make that programming undisrupted. And then the partnership and the adjustments and, you know, with Becky and her team. It's been, there's been a lot of effort that's gone into it, but I agree with you that the, the compliment is owed to the staff for, for their ability to manage this and really focus on the kids and what they're doing on a day-to-day. And I can say, based on a, you know, very primarily, we did a survey not too long ago and it was a very favorable result along all of those questions.
When I think back to the number of emails, critical emails I got as a chair, I suspect you don't, you haven't, you know, you haven't added any, right? At least none to speak of, or?
Nope.
Not on that topic. So just one last reminder to the committee too. So the committee will have to decide, you know, if tuition or, you know, fees will be increased. So we'll be having that, you know, discussion, provide you with data to make a decision in February. I will say that, you know, as we look at the financials today, you know, if I had to make, if we had to make a recommendation today would not be to increase fees to our parents. And I think very few things in the world that I, you don't see an increase in, in costs and a high, high level and high quality of service the team provides.
That's good to know.
All right. Also, in your packet is the budget priorities, community budget priorities. Those were approved last month. We have the budget calendar, so this is our running record of budget meetings. So Cheryl adds meetings as they take place. I think the month of December is very busy and feels condensed in terms of budget meetings, but it's important because there's a smaller window of time to get the budget work completed. Also in your packet is just congratulations to Woodward Elementary School. So Woodward was ranked as one of the top elementary schools in Massachusetts by U S News World in Report. Although it doesn't tell the whole story of all the wonderful things that are happening at Woodward School. And it is, it is one metric among many that support that the student experience, the family experience is an exceptional one due to the hard work of faculty and staff, caring of teachers. Also, the result of hard work of the FIN faculty, staff, and teachers and educators. It is, you know, we build as we, as we move the kids through. So I think it's a testament to the district. I think it's a, it's, it's great. It's always great news. And honestly, in terms of house values, this means something in terms of when people move into the community, into a community, they're looking at these types of rankings. Although it doesn't tell the whole story. I think it is, it is one metric that people do look at. So congratulations to Woodward faculty and staff and the FIN faculty and staff for, for the accolades.
Yeah, I, I would second that. I applaud them and I think that it's no easy feat. If you look at the other participants or the folks that this article decided to compare against, these are all high caliber schools and districts. You know, as a school board, we, we know them as, as, as school districts. So I was elated to just see Woodward in the top spot there. It was meant to be a Boston article, but South Borough rose to the occasion. So that's really great to see. Congratulations.
And that's what Steve gets for not coming. Also in your packet is a memo around mold mitigation. So as the committee is well aware, it was a challenging late August and September at FIN school as a result of mold. I think Keith and the team did an outstanding job taking it seriously and taking action and implementing mold mitigation steps. Unfortunately though, in order to make, ensure that the environment was safe, it did cost money. So Becky provided the committee with a itemized list of the expenses as a result of mold mitigation thus far. We did receive a twenty-five thousand dollar insurance claim that did offset some of the costs, but the maximum insurance claim for mold is twenty-five thousand dollars. So that was the cap. And now we are left with eighty-seven thousand dollars in expenses that we did not budget for, that are currently taken off the bottom line, that are having an impact on other things we're not doing as a result. He did send a letter to Mark Purple, the town administrator, asking or requesting access to the town's reserve fund in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars. So he has that memo and he'll distribute it to the boards and committees. I will let the committee know once I hear of any presentations that are required or any future information. I am requesting the money, access to the reserve fund now, not at the end of the school year because at the end of the school year really doesn't help us. It means that we just have to not do things we had planned on doing. So just information for the committee and I'd be happy to answer any questions or keep, Becky.
I have a question. Restoring the reserve fund. What are our possible options?
So, so we, the money that, the expenses from mold mitigation cap came out of the appropriated budget, not our reserve fund. So, and this is the conversation of if, if we go to the town and ask money for the town reserve and it's not approved or not funded, then we need to look at our reserve fund. So I think right now, it's, it's taken off our FI twenty-four appropriated budget amount. And we didn't budget for this.
Chelsea? So the approval is really from advisory, right? So what I don't want to happen is have this kicked to a select board meeting and then have them say this needs to go to advisory. So do you have?
Yes, I've had conversations with, with Mark. I started with him and we've had conversations. This is advisory.
Okay. So I think the important thing to note when whoever presents this to advisory is that the reserve fund for the town does not roll over year to year, right? Like it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that fiscal year. And if you don't spend it, it goes back into, into, yeah, it just goes back in, it starts your year for the next year, but it's not allocated to reserve fund. Sorry, that was a weird way of saying it. But for our, for our revolving account, that's something that does roll over year to year that we wanna have for capital projects so that we don't have to go to the town and we can build it up over time so that we can do capital projects without raising taxes. So I think, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to wipe out a revolving account that we, we do systematically with, you know, working with the team and having thoughtful projects that get taken off of the warrant. So that would be kind of my pitch to utilizing the reserve fund for this, whereas this is really an emergent situation. And that's really what the reserve fund is there for. Obviously, we don't have a reserve fund, which is why we have to go to town.
And I'll also add to that, that if, you know, one, when we present to advisory, we can also demonstrate emergencies that we've had where we've gone to our revolving account. You know, the breaker at?
Trotiere.
Trotiere, the hot water heater at, you know, Near East School. There are many examples of where we've accessed our own reserve fund, our revolving.
Revolving account.
Because we've had a good balance and we, you know, we, you know, when we have two hundred thousand dollars, we take about fifty thousand and say, okay, if something happens, this is where we're going.
But I think the sooner we can get on advisory's agenda, the better. Because, you know, the other option we have that I don't think we should do, but if we had to, is we could quit, request an article on the warrant, which should be open right now for this to increase taxes in the current year.
Cause not, not, not the upcoming?
No, so you can't, I, I've never seen it done.
Okay.
But you could do it. Because I really feel strongly that this should not impact our current operational budget.
Let's, Roger. I was gonna say, for scheduling, when you get a calendar date, could you share that with me? And I'll request who would like to attend and support on behalf of the committee. And I will volunteer Chelsea to go.
Wow.
I usually don't have to be voluntold. Okay, Roger, Becky.
So I can't agree more.
I've already told her.
With Chelsea's comments about this.
Yeah.
Greg, you, you mentioned reserve fund twice. The first time I wasn't clear when we were talking about the school, but the second time you said the reserve fund, and then you said all revolving funds. So when you say schools. And then you said all revolving funds. So when you say schools reserves, you're not suggesting that we lobby to have our own reserve fund, right?
No, I missed that one.
I just wanna be clear on that. That'd be tough.
Alright.
So we, I will keep, I will uh, reach out to Mr. Purple in the morning and see where we are in terms of moving this forward. The, that was my last comment. Um, this isn't the end of our mold mitigation.
Uh-huh.
And this is, this is the, this is the sh- the action that we needed to take to get to a place where we could continue. More, more work is required. So we have air conditioning to look at. We have power washing and ceiling of the FIN building. We also have drainage around perimeter drains, French drains around the building. So there are more expenses that we need to move forward with. And we'll be having a conversation with capital around what those will be for FY twenty-five capital. But we're not done yet either, so I think that's important to note.
And I remember, I think it was Keith last meeting, you kind of bulleted out what all of those were. And yes, looking at this list, it does not help.
Can I just make one other comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, nice job on getting the max from the insurance company though.
Yes.
So I think that was a positive. I wish it was more, but at least, at least we got.
Yes.
What we could.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So lastly, for the superintendent's report, it's just a memo, um, the South Borough Police Partnership. So as the committee is, is aware, um, the South Borough Police Department brought to the district and the committee the idea of having a office for the South Borough Police Department to do paperwork and administration, not actual police work in terms of arresting and.
Yes.
You know, having weapons on site. So we thought that was a great idea. Um, we've been working with the SP, the South Borough Police Department on um, using one of the locker rooms that's not used at FIN Elementary. Uh, Chief Newell has been wonderful in partnering with us to make sure it's, it's, you know, suitable for an office. There's a desk, there's a computer, um, it's a space for an officer to not have to drive all the way back to the station by Woodward. They can stay on that side of town, complete the paperwork and then go back to um, their, their responsibilities. It also provides an extra layer when the officer is in the office. It's a police presence on the campus.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think it's just a creative way of trying to get more presence of, of police and safety officials in our buildings. And it also serves the community well and folks who live on that side of town should see an increased presence as well.
Have we overcome the first pickups of like wifi and electrical and all that good stuff or still working through it?
Still, still working through it. We're very close. We've um, remedied probably ninety-plus percent of it. I got word on that earlier today. Um, so we were reconnecting with the town around some of the IT issues that were there. But we look like, so we've resolved, we just need their stamp that we've satisfied all of their needs and hopefully they'll be move-in ready, turnkey ready.
Okay.
Chelsea, have we gotten any reactions over any of it?
No.
Okay.
Uh, what, I would, I did receive.
You sent out several memos. I've seen it everywhere.
I know, I did receive an email, um, from a parent just saying thank you. This is, this is very creative thinking and, you know.
Okay. I guess that's.
Favorable.
One favorable.
One favorable. Well, our barometer is if we don't, if we don't necessarily hear from people.
Yeah, no, it's all favorable.
All favorable.
Okay, good. Um, that's all I had in your um, update. If there's anything else, Roger? Okay, um, so let's, in the agenda, let's move on to um, personnel items.
So we have, um, in, in your packet, as of December thirteenth, we have a couple of transfers. So we have custodians who are uh, moving up in positions. So Christopher Banks will be, uh, is moving from Trotter Middle School to head custodian at FIN. And then we have Robert Holm Junior, who was the custodian in Near East and Trotter Schools, um, will be moving to Trotter Middle School solely.
Exclusively, yeah.
Divided by, into two schools. Then we have two retirements. So Anne Marie Angus, who is a PE teacher here at Trotter, will be retiring at the end of this um, school year. And Deborah Kutch, who is a clerical, um, you know, admin assistant basically at Near East, uh, will be retiring at the end of this uh, school year as well. And will have an opportunity to celebrate all of her retirees um, in May and June.
In May and June, will we invite back any retirees such as Mr. Boy? Okay.
She only gets one, one gift.
Um, next around uh, communications, let's see if there's any. I don't, I don't have any. Um, but let's go, so we can do action on minutes. We have minutes from the special open meeting, minutes of October fourth, twenty twenty-three. Um, if you have your packets or your um, electronic device, um, let me know if there's any uh, comments or objections on those. We also have to take action on the open meeting minutes of November sixth, twenty twenty-three. Okay, I will um, accept a motion to approve the special open meeting minutes of October fourth, twenty twenty-three and the open meeting minutes of November sixth, twenty twenty-three. So. So. So moved by Chelsea, second by um, Jen. Um, any discussion or objections? Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Those are passed. We don't have any new bills or payroll items, so let's talk about planning for next month's meeting agenda items. So far, we have a couple that we listed. So the um, FY twenty-five recommended budget, an update from what we talked about today, some feedback that we all shared, some questions. ELA presentation, um, who would provide that?
Agent Kelton.
Okay. Um, MCAS presentation, so um, world language update. Um, I think that would uh, hit some of the questions that you had, Chelsea, earlier to just to hear. Just, okay. Um, anything else that we wanna put on the list now?
Transportation.
Transportation.
Now, you mentioned that you might wanna do a little overview of the, um, ASAM joint conference. Are you thinking about doing that next month or?
I will put that as like a tentative. If the agenda gets too full, then I'll, uh, I can just share that via, via email, like.
Just your notes gonna be very interesting to see, I don't know, so.
Um, anything else? You see? Chelsea, Jen, Roger? Okay, well, if something comes up, just email me and um, we always review the agenda in advance, so I can, we can add it then. Um.
Can I just highlight two meeting, upcoming meetings for the committee? So on Monday, we'll be meeting with the South Borough Capital Improvement Planning Committee at seven o'clock. Um, and then we have a um, special open meeting the morning of um, the twentieth, December twentieth, to continue the conversations around FY twenty-five budget.
Are we expected to be there on Monday? That's just the central office team or?
Yeah, so typically, um, Keith and I will attend.
Okay. Okay.
Pres- present the capital plan and.
Yeah.
What we think are the priorities for what we move forward, but in terms of warrant articles.
Okay. So have we posted for the meeting on the twentieth already? I'm not, probably not.
We got the agenda.
Yes, I believe Cheryl has posted.
It is posted, okay. Alright. Let's note that that is um, at seven thirty, like our previous one.
A M.
Mm-hmm. That's the killer. Just, just wanna note that.
Remembering that part.
Um, alrighty. Um, oh, the time is, so um, I will accept a motion to um, I don't know. Accept a motion to clo- I'll make a motion to, to adjourn the meeting as of nine, ten P M. So moved by Roger?
Second.
Second by Jen, all in favor? Alright, okay. Thank you all. Have a good evening.